The TCS Board Finance and Operations Committee meeting on Thursday, December fourth, 2025. I call this meeting of the Board Finance and Operations Committee to order the committee would like to welcome the audience. You may watch live board committee meetings online at tcaps.net. Backside board recorded meeting minutes may be viewed on demand at the same address. Um, so any public comment? Obviously none. Um, draft committee meeting minutes. We're at the approval of the draft committee meeting minutes from the prior meeting? Are there any changes to the meeting minutes?
I just have one question. Under the transportation policy guideline review section, it says the committee received an overview of the transportation department's new routing software capabilities, which is fine. Additionally, members received a draft of the policy guidelines for their review. I think we were also asked for some input or feedback.
For future reference, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe for their review and to offer feedback.
Sure.
Yep.
And, and I guess then my next question is, did anything come of that feedback? Or did you, did you, are we going to require now our students, our middle and high school students to, to use their ID to get on the bus?
That's something I talked to Dr. Van Wagner about, and I think it would be a conversation with the full board about how to proceed. We are operating this school year with having the drivers do it manually. So we aren't looking to, I think it's hard to do a mid-year change. So my recommendation is to have a discussion maybe in the spring about having it start in September if we want to make a change.
Yeah, and I like that. I think, you know, a committee of the whole, and I was just wondering where that went and, and so.
Nowhere yet. We're just having discussions on what that looks like.
Yeah, so I would just recommend that one little change that we did provide some input and then, and then we'll look for it in the spring.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Amended, I guess. Clarify? Um, I will make that motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Well, if they were say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on. Bids and services. Music department. Sandy?
Yes. Good morning.
There you are.
Uh, we have Chad Mehlens here with us today as well. He is the K through 12 music coordinator and him and I work together on this project. Uh, he replaced Wendy Wolf Schlar last fall, or last spring. Welcome.
Thank you.
So the music department just has the ability to replace aging instruments and equipment utilizing bond funds, which supports keeping their inventory fine tuned, pun intended. So their bond funds for music allows them to have quality instruments and equipment for their students, which continues, which supports their growth, you know, so. Uh, we advertised, um, in the Record Eagle, we received nine bids, which is a great outcome. Um, and we are bringing this recommendation to you guys today to support five of those vendors out of the nine for a total of seventy-nine instruments to be purchased for, for throughout the schools, for many schools, for a total of eighty-three thousand three nineteen, which does include a ten percent contingency and four thousand dollars included in that for direct purchase items. There were a few things that we received no bid on. That would be the euphonium and the temple box and mallets, and that allows them to go ahead and purchase those items outright. Um, and then, um, we did extend, uh, we did have extended due diligence to take the lowest responsible bid, which, which we did. It's a pretty cut and dry project that we, that we had.
And just a question on the, um, the instruments that you'll be replacing. Do you sell those or do you recycle those or do you donate? What happens to the older instruments?
Yeah, so one of the things I know that I've talked to Christine about is going through and having a good grasp of what our inventory is and what you can do with those. A lot of those instruments, like you said, um, people don't like to throw things out. A lot of those instruments just continue to be stored. And so especially with like the renovations that we're doing in different music buildings, we're looking at like efficiencies in terms of the storage and what we can do with those. There are avenues to be able to sell them and get some sort of revenue from those, recycle those. There are companies that specialize in that. And I think that we'd be looking at doing that with a lot of different instruments across all the secondary sites over the next couple of years here with this, these projects going on.
And how often do you replace or buy new? Just curious.
Really depends. Most of the instruments that we have, they will last for decades. There are some instruments that, I mean, we've had since the seventies and still work. There are a good amount of band instruments that are being replaced. A lot of the electronics in here are replacements for like electronics, uh, like the choir programs and things like that. A lot of these are also brand new string instruments due to increased enrollment in our string programs across all four secondary sites and the Montessori site. Uh, Montessori up to this point has not had their own inventory of string instruments, and they've been borrowing instruments from West Middle and East Middle. We've had a lot of fluency between the different secondary sites to be able to fill in gaps, but it's gotten to a point where we can't do that anymore. And if we want to be able to provide instruments for the students, a lot of the string ones are, are new for that purpose.
They do get an annual allocation. So do they purchase every year or two years?
It's every other two years. It's every two years.
So they use their annual allocation, um, in one month, some every two years to purchase. So this has been coming to the board for quite some time, for at least the past ten, fifteen years, I think.
It's set in like two thousand four.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Are these refurbished? Is any of them or are they all brand new?
They're all brand new.
And like Chad said, we have been working on trying to get a handle on our inventory. You know, one of the things that specifically with music is this money set aside for instruments, but there's other things that, to be honest, I don't even know what they own and what might need to be recycled that we're looking at having a better understanding going forward in the next bond plan. Um, you, you've got some risers, you've got.
Shell pieces.
Shell pieces and, um, it's a lot easier in bond planning to know now what they need for the next ten years. It's really hard when, you know, not, not their fault, but when they come to you and say, hey, I need to replace these now, when the bond money's already been planned out, it's really hard to accommodate that. So we're really looking at trying to get some good inventory, age, warranty, amount we spent on repairs so we can have a better system moving forward.
It's pretty hard if you don't have a great storage unit in all your buildings and to know, you know, what you have and what you're using and then sharing between buildings and those kind of things.
And we do have inventories that we track what we have. It's not that we don't know what we have. It's more a situation of, um, understanding lifespan on those instruments and being able to anticipate, like Christine said, the need as it comes up instead of, um, having to kind of do that on the fly, so.
Just like we would do with technology purchases, they have their plans out for the next ten years. It changes, but we know what they need in the next bond plan, so we're better able to accommodate that.
So I move that, uh, the finance committee approve the eighty-three thousand three nineteen, which includes the ten percent contingency to the full order under consent.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on. Um, curriculum, Mr. Tyzworth.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so a memo that you have in front of you is to spend the majority of the remaining of the thirty-five M grant fund. So thirty-five M, just a reminder, was a grant that the state had for, um, science of reading-based English language arts curriculum. Uh, ours was, came to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we came to the board, I believe in the fall for the first chunk of that. Uh, we have to have that remaining of that spent by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So Brittany and I, Sandy, Cindy have been working with CKLA going back and forth, getting a quote to figure out how we can get our needs met, what exactly we want from those materials, how they're best spent. Um, the state is very specific on, uh, the curriculum you have to use. CKLA is one of them. We kind of got, there's other curriculums you could use, but we're locked into that because of our first grant, I don't know if you remember thirty-five J, but that was the original grant of about a million dollars that we bought CKLA with. So these are all state, uh, not competitive grants. You apply, you tell them what you want, and, and you, then you're given the funds. Um, because we're locked into CKLA now, we needed to finish out with that product. The majority of the, of the materials that you have in front of you, uh, is kind of, uh, we have some teacher guides we want to make sure that we have out for the next five to six years, consumables. Um, and then we were able to add on language studio. Language studio is kind of an extension of CKLA that was approved by the state that we can use with our English language learners. So that was really nice to include that. Uh, one thing that we wanted to try to include was Boost Reading. So Boost Reading is a tier-two, um, computer-based program. It helps that it's, it goes along with the curriculum, so we're not buying a lot of one-off products that are not necessarily vetted or research-based. It's nice to have one to go to. Unfortunately, Boost Reading was not part of the state approval, even though it was part of the curriculum. That did not, was not included to be able to spend with thirty-five M. So we worked with CKLA quite a bit for them to include that for the next five years for free is about, it's about a three hundred thousand dollar savings. And then they also are going to provide instead, which was approved, is some professional development where they actually have somebody on site for year two, uh, which is really nice to have as far as implementation. You know, we just don't do implementation for a year and say, you know, we're, we're done implementing, go ahead for the next five years and teach a curriculum. We continue to spiral back with teachers, uh, continue to have the, the curriculum implemented. Uh, so we don't fall into that kind of the same pattern that we did with Journeys that we started that implementation. And then the reason why we had a lot of materials left over from Journeys because people just stopped teaching it or they started to supplement a lot. So keeping that implementation going more than a year guarantees those materials are used.
Well, curriculum put it on consent, so I assume we're just going to keep it on consent. And I know the numbers don't add up and that they will come back with a final grant report.
I clarified that in email to the board.
Yeah, so I'm fine moving it to consent.
Okay. That was a motion.
I guess that was a motion.
I mean, or we can ask questions, but I mean, I, I think curriculum did a good job of explaining it.
And this has been a continual, I, even when I serve on curriculum, uh, CKLA.
Yeah. And my anecdotal evidence so far, CKLA is being accepted and it's fairly effective so far. We're having good luck with it.
Yeah, it's implemented. The nice thing is that right now you go to any, any classroom teaching language arts and it's being taught. And within a grade level, the pacing is within one to two weeks, what we've seen so far. Uh, we've got quite a bit of feedback after parent-teacher conferences. And we got this last year with our, our early adopters is that we're getting, um, just feedback from parents that kids are coming home and talking about what they're learning more than they have in the past because there's that engagement piece, the knowledge section of CKLA. We all, we often hear again that they come, they come home and they're actually talking about what they're learning. Then those two things, uh, implementation is going well. The data part in the spring, you know, implementation is more about making sure everybody's doing it with fidelity the first year or so. We're not necessarily going to see a huge spike in data. We wouldn't expect it. Obviously, that'd be a great bonus in year one to see it, but definitely within the first two to three is where, where we like to see those data returns.
And we seem to be exhausting this grant budget. We don't anticipate down the road here anymore. In-service training needed or anything, you do it comes out of general fund?
Yeah, yeah, or Title II. So any other professional development around CKLA, we don't anticipate it, especially coming from CKLA. We would do that more in-house with our, uh, English language arts, uh, leadership team that we have, uh, that Brittany leads.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We're moving on to the board for consent. Thanks, Dan.
Yes, sir.
All right, facilities, Christine.
Yeah, so, um, this is, uh, a large purchase of wall-mounted, uh, bottle fillers and water coolers. I've, I've been sharing with the board for quite some time the new regulations for lead testing and requirements for bottle fillers and consumable stations. Um, I think you might recall that we had to do an audit, uh, by January of this year. We did that audit. Um, we are working on where in the building we actually have consumable water and where we, um, actually make it hand washing only. Um, if you'll remember, we have to lead test every single output of consumable water every year in all of our buildings, um, which is a pretty heavy load, so we are, um, discontinuing some of them in classrooms for, uh, consumable. Um, we will be putting signs on them as required, um, for hand washing only, not consumable. That's a part of the requirement as well. This first, uh, big purchase is simply to transfer everything that we currently have in our district to the, the new regulations. Um, this does not actually get us up to the ratios we need to get to. And I have shared with Dr. Van Wagner, I don't think we'll get there by, um, the timeframe that has been shared with us. I don't think anybody in the state will be. He's been having some conversations with legislators about that. Um, it was supposed to be a funded mandate. Um, we've gotten some funded, funding, but not nearly enough. This purchase is swim, simply for, um, the actual equipment. Our plumber will do the swap outs. The ones that we need to add to get to ratio, so it's one to one hundred occupants. We had a long lag of time where they actually explained what occupants mean. At first they said students, and we challenged that thinking that doesn't make any sense because we have other people in the building. And we pushed them for a better, um, response on that. We finally got that. It is everybody in the building. Um, so we have buildings where we need to add them. That includes, that's, uh, architectural renderings and, um, a contractor to come in, bust a hole in the wall, get water lines, get. So it's not, um, that's a pretty big project with a hefty price tag. Um, we simply don't have it available in this bond program. Um, so if there are more funds to apply for, we'll do so. Um, but that's something that, you know, we're, we're hoping the legislation changes that deadline. It, it's simply not reasonable, especially with the huge lag of time where they actually explained what the requirements were.
What was the deadline again? That they said you were supposed to come up all?
June of twenty-sixth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
It's, um, I've had some conversations quite a bit with legislators and John Roth was in just, uh, last, two weeks ago. And we talked about it and it's something that a, a lot of districts are saying, A, it wasn't funded to the level that it should have been for what the need is. So I do anticipate they're going to go after a categorical, um, in the next budget to, and try and extend this. I think in a supplemental, they'll try and get an extension and then funding in the next budget to give another round, um, you know, as this goes. Because there's a lot of districts that just said, you know, the state, we submitted numbers and the state came back with a number that just wasn't right for a lot of places. So I do anticipate there'll be something more like that.
And this is a state mandate, not a federal. This is Eagle.
This is Eagle. And so I feel very good that everything we will have in our building meets requirements and will be lead tested. The missing piece is that ratio. So we will be missing numbers of bottle fillers in some buildings, not all.
And when we say we don't meet the deadline, what's the penalty if you don't meet the deadline?
It isn't really clear at all. There, there's nothing there.
This entire process has not been clear. I, I can't even count up the number of hours that ran and I have spent in meetings and on Zoom calls trying to get clarification.
So if, uh, um, capital bonds funds the one twenty-four, three eighty-three, and then the general fund of the fourteen, two sixty-four, and then what if Eagle comes back and increases a grant of some sort or supplemental, can we?
We, depending on the timing, yes.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, I think that, again, it's going to take us a while to do this as well. So, you know, if something comes in from that standpoint, we know it.
Okay.
You know, we can, we can re, re shift and go from there.
It all depends on the restrictions of the grant itself. The bulk of our expenses will be in trying to get those new ones because of the installation, engineering and architecture work. So I would be surprised if that's fully funded, but we'll see.
Okay. So I move that the finance committee approve the, uh, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, which includes a ten percent contingency and that we move this to consent.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, thank you.
The one thing I will say is the sustainability committee was really excited about, you know, not have as many wa, water bottles and that of bottle fillers that we can continue to encourage across the district, so just a side note.
I mean, it's definitely a good, I mean, the bottle fillers are great. They're, they are popping up everywhere in hotels and airports.
And they're filtered, right?
They are, which it just, it, it, it is all great. It poses a huge additional general fund, not huge, but it, it poses more general fund expenses with changing filters, um, with the lead testing itself, with monitoring, keep, I mean, it's all good stuff. It does have a financial impact.
And we get this, you know, like with the air, um, purifier, same way. Like with, they bought us a certain amount of filters, but once they're gone, like.
Now we have to sustain the cost.
This is the common thing that happens with the state that I'm always going. If you're going to have a program, you have to have a sustainability plan for districts and what that is. And it's just always the interest. Well, it's just wrapped into your foundation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Teaching in their name.
Yeah. And at some point, like our custodians keep getting pushed, they're, they're changing the air filter ones, and now they're going to have to change these and, you know.
That's our.
Ingoing operational costs.
Yes.
Never accounted for. Okay, uh, moving on. Capital projects, Mr. Dwayne.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
What we've got in front of you today is, uh, the renovations here at Glen Loomis, uh, to, uh, in preparation for students coming from central grade. As you know, some work was done here a while ago to move admin over here. And that work was put in place so that it could easily be removed, knowing that we're going to have students here at some point. So this contract that we're looking to award is a removal of all those partition walls that were, uh, put in place. Uh, some renovations to the kitchen, um, some purchase of new kitchen equipment, upgrades to the gym, um, some replacement of some exterior doors that are dire need of it. Um, of course, there's the train work that will be going on in concert with this work. So we've got several meetings planned for that. We did bid the, uh, construction work, uh, out through the typical sources. We advertise at Sigma and, uh, Builders Exchange, Record Eagle. And that, the kitchen equipment that we're looking to purchase, uh, we did through a purchasing consortium, a source wealth contract, uh, with, uh, Stafford Smith, worked with Tom Freitas on that to get the equipment they need going into that kitchen. So, uh, we are actually, uh, had a number of bids on this. It was, uh, surprising to see the turnout. On this, we got six bids for this work. And, uh, the bids came in under our budget, so. Pretty good thing.
I mean, I don't know if you guys saw the spread of the bids, but I think it goes to show either how busy people are or, um, I think some of, I mean, with all of our bids, everything is costing more. I think some of that is fear of tariffs if they, um, haven't hit yet. That I think companies are just worried they're going to be stuck with the increased costs or they're upcharging. I don't know the answer to all of it, but a lot of budgets are making me really nervous right now.
We, um, the, the, the thing I saw with, that's good is that we have several new general contractors that are eager to work with TCS too on our projects, so. It makes for a competitive market.
Now, all of these seem to be known commodities. That's, that's a good sign.
The challenge with this, I was really hoping not to spend this money. The challenge with this is we have to make sure that what they have works for three years. And the biggest expense is getting the fire, um, alarm system up to code and the PA system up to code. So they have to actually insert full stations in every classrooms. They current, don't currently exist because we were grandfathered in. Because we're doing renovations and we'll have students in here for three years, we now have to bring that up to code, which actually, it's just a good idea to do. It's just, that was like the bulk of the expense was the fire alarm. And I, I mean, we need it.
You don't need to sprinkle, I take it.
No.
No, no, but you know, the one thing I will say to that is, well, yeah, we're doing it. I think that, again, having overall in mind our future of this building to use is that early childhood center, there, there are investments that will be used. You know, a big chunk is that, the gym floor believes in this as well.
Kitchen equipment.
You know, kitchen, you know, that stuff that will be a part of the usage of this building long-term. You know, I want to stress, these are not dollars that are just being put in for central grade and then they're done. You know, this truly is an investment in the infrastructure of the building, you know, permanently.
Yeah, if or when we do something with the new bond to actually do major renovations here, this stuff will stay. Nothing will come back out. Even the technology, I think, will be, if it's brand new, I think it'll be fine for a few years, so, especially if it's a childcare center.
And this building has been remediated, I see, when we moved in here or?
Uh, prior to that.
Prior to it, yeah. Was it? Okay.
Plus, since Paul started here, he's been doing a lot of remediation.
Every time we touch a building.
I can imagine, that's all. All right, um.
Anyway, the contract, uh, amount for the construction is, um, six hundred sixty thousand three hundred. Kitchen equipment is forty-eight, five twenty. The contingency is only on the construction dollars, not on the kitchen equipment. And that, so the total, uh, request is for seven seventy-four, eight fifty. To do this work, we had budgeted, I think, eight hundred and fifty thousand for it.
And that seven seventy-four, eight fifty includes the over contingent, or the contingency?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it's kind of, it doesn't make sense if you try to add them only because we didn't do a contingency on the kitchen segment.
Okay, got it. So I move that the finance committee approve the seven seventy-four, eight fifty, uh, to be moved to consent for the whole work.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're moving on. Is that Eckler, Denny is no longer there, is he?
No.
Okay, so it's Ben?
It's Ben.
Yeah, okay.
And Ben Eckler is the company that did the partitioning and all the work for us when we moved in.
And Ben Eckler is the company that did the partitioning and all the work for us when we moved admin over here.
The other thing that I didn't point out that we're doing that I think is important, we're we're actually creating an ADA restroom accessible from the hallway. We don't really have, I mean, thank you, I think you've seen the the restrooms we currently have. The current um restroom inside the staff lounge will now be accessible from the hallway and it'll be um enlarged with some new fixtures. So that it's an actual true ADA accessible restroom.
Are the petitions salvageable for any other purposes?
The partitions are not, the doors and frames are.
Okay.
So the doors and frames actually came from the shop.
Okay.
From other projects, so.
Okay.
Pulling under those.
So we're gonna save them again.
The partitions, are they dry, are they drywalled?
They're drywall, metal wall and steel.
Studs, okay, got it.
Metal stud drywall.
Yeah.
And they're just, they're they're attached so that they can be taken out.
Okay.
Sammy, I don't know on that motion whether we ought to say act to act our construction in the amount of, just so we designate you the. So somebody's not searching through all the records to figure out.
We Eckler to add Stafford Smith.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um I guess that's it on capital projects. About capital projects update, here we go.
And and again, I just wanna clarify, on our finance when we do this, whenever the board sees procedural items, these are decisions that we're looking for. I know you've asked some questions and process for us to think about in the future. So that's how we have this agenda and I think it's kinda what you're looking for in the future with others, you know? And then if you see informational, no decision, just talking about it.
And what I what I appreciate about this agenda is that every one of these procedural discussion items has a memo to go with it.
Yeah.
And so my complaint or suggestion for last month was just, cause I was unclear about what we were providing feedback on the policy or the guideline. Cause the policy didn't have a date on it, so I just think as we become more efficient, um if we can just have a memo for a few sentences. For everything that you're looking for.
In in procedural, yeah, in procedural.
In procedural, so, because I appreciate the five, these are five memos that were great, so I come in prepared, I know what's going on and so. That's just some feedback that, and maybe that's for our chair or.
I think it's for Scott and you brought it up, so it's something I know we're gonna look at in January, so.
The hard thing, the hard thing sometimes is we provide documentation without the presentation. And so it is kinda left to you to figure out what we're gonna talk about, so that's sometimes hard. I can do a better job when I start the informational conversation to make sure.
Uh again, I I don't think it's too much to ask to just provide like a one sentence, like here's what the the purpose or here's who's bringing this to the board. Here's what we'd like to see from the board, I think the same thing happened with TAG, to be honest. There was a circular inefficient discussion that went around in circles, because I didn't know what was expected of us or the feedback that was asked of us. So I think it just, like today, five five memos, great, you know? So if there's something like that, that we can just add a one sentence, here's what we're looking for.
I think perhaps I rec- I would recommend that we just add it to the agenda. So underneath informational items, if it says transportation guideline, the board will be asked to review the recommended. Uh I think right on the agenda would be best.
Perfect, yeah, that's fine.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, I mean, and and I I I appreciate memos in the meeting packet. Um but if that's whatever the scope and purpose of the procedural item is, like then I can come in and not waste people's time asking questions about things that have decided, you know, a year ago.
But just like, so you're so you're good with like, but informational items is just discussion.
Yeah, just review.
There's not a memo, there's not, it's just conversation.
Yeah, reporting out, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, yep.
If we ever have public here, I think it also helps the public immensely to know what we're doing with these.
Like I said, I think it's a great discussion to get some uniformity too in January when the board organizational of how we want these.
Yeah, and we don't have a board operating procedure, so that might be something that for all for all of our committees, that just have a standard way of operating.
Okay, meanwhile, back at the ranch.
Ready?
Paul was talking about capital projects.
Not yet, I wasn't, but so uh out on Cass Road uh facilities, uh we've got a new storage building going up. It's all enclosed, I was telling Scott earlier, uh the temp heat in their space makes that warmer than my office out there, so. But this is the where we're at, they got the exterior doors to put up yet, the concrete work's done. That open area where you see the um the lift stuck in, that's an outdoor open storage with a canopy over the top of it. So we've got outdoor storage, indoor storage protected for our equipment and goods and stuff.
And I'm.
And this is the interior.
One side of it, there is a um a section that's not part of the bigger, that will be for storage um of more climate controlled things. Like some of our, like none of our business office files that are currently here will fit at Saban. Um so those will go there and there will be excess room, so we'll have a conversation probably with music and some others about what they need.
There's a demising wall that's been put up since I took this picture in here that divides the space off. It's all heated, all of it's heated, just the other side's heated.
Unit heaters they take of some sort.
On the one side, they're unit heaters, on the other side, it's more climate control.
Oh, right.
So.
What is your record storage requirement, how long do you need?
It's different with everything, I mean, we've got some payroll records that are like ninety nine years.
You kidding me?
No.
No.
Yeah, Bridge Park or something?
Yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole.
Yeah, every item is different.
Yep.
And it it does sometimes change, so we look at it on an annual basis.
Shouldn't give us a bit of retention, you know, records and things, doesn't matter.
Okay.
For every property we own, every building we own, we have to store all the drawings and records for that building as long as we own it.
That's built, I can understand.
So this is over at Saban, the windows going in uh on the exterior of the building there. And the forest of studs for the interior partitioning uh are up, framing's going up, the back uh the supports for attachments are in there with the wood blocking. There's clerestory windows, you can kinda see the framed openings so that it lets daylight in from the exterior. Windows all through the whole space into offices and that, the corridor.
That is one narrow hallway.
It appears narrow, it's not bad.
It looks like it on here, but when you go there, it's not that bad. I mean, it's not not as big as like a school hallway.
No.
But it, I know I saw that and I went there and I'm like, oh, I feel better.
Once we drop this.
Doesn't look like it's ADA accessible, do you know what I mean?
It is.
It is.
Yeah, it is, it's it's.
I trust you.
Once we drop the ceiling in there, it'll, it won't look like that.
Yeah.
The angle too, I think, excuse it.
And we redone some of the parking and the sidewalks, paving, the base course of pavings are all in, obviously, this was taken before last weekend.
Yeah.
So another shot of that. Uh our bus charging station, um the charging station's in, the everything's set, ready to go. Consumers are supposed to be out there uh December, December twelfth, I think it is, they're supposed to come and energize it all and.
We've all said.
Have it commissioned and then we'll sit and wait for the bus to show up.
If we only had a bus, something to plug it into.
There it is, it's a nice looking unit. So again, and these were taken obviously before last weekend. So out at uh West Senior High, um take a last look at those lights, this is the last picture of that you'll see because they're gone.
Okay, every time I drive by, I'm like, they're still there.
All the, all the old lights are gone and down, the new lights are working, the left turn signals are working. Everything's in place, the old poles are taken out, the guy wire that was stuck in the middle of the sidewalk's gone. All that stuff, it's gone, so.
Of course, you wouldn't know with all the snow over it.
No, you wouldn't, but our, we are making sure that the sidewalk is plowed all the way out to the roadway. And Rob's taking care of that, Rob Wolf and stuff, so. But, yep, the lights are working.
Seems like the furor has died down considerably.
Haven't had any complaints, haven't had.
I'm sure something with the arrow will need to be adjusted and we'll we'll respond to that.
I know, I had a couple of people just go, it's nice to have a left turn arrow that detects me.
Yeah.
It's pointing left.
It is, and in all directions, so.
Yeah.
You know.
I can, I pull up the traffic on on this at least once a week and watch a a cycle through the morning, cycle through the afternoon. Um and it seems to be moving pretty fast through there, you know, the whole s- segment, if you put it on an eight times speed on the camera as a playback, then it. You can watch it going and it takes fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, empty that place right out.
That's great, and great to see the sidewalks this year, oh my gosh, but when taking my kids to school and watching kids truck through the snow and icy roads. It was always terrifying for the kids, so so appreciate.
Yeah, walking through parking lots and across all the traffic and, yeah.
And we'll be back at it again next summer.
Yeah, yeah, could see that.
Okay, just when it's all laid down, you're gonna see.
Sure. Well, we're gonna fix the other half, it'll make it better, it's the other half, so.
That's what we said before, so.
If people don't pay attention and they're gonna be like, what are they doing now?
Why are you redoing what you just did?
Totally, I can't, can't wait for that.
You just did that, what's the matter with?
You just modified the behavior, we're gonna modify it.
Yeah, maybe we should send out a, on that mode of a west families or something. I know, I know.
We will, we will.
So um I put in here some updates as it relates to West Middle School, uh music classroom renovation, so we're in a really good spot. Um we'll be going out to bid, remind me, Paul?
It's real soon.
Yeah.
Cause we just had the eighty percent review drawings, we sent them back to them.
I think, I think we go out, I don't know, two weeks maybe?
Yeah.
Um and we give a us enough time throughout the holidays um for contractors to respond to it. So one of the things that I just wanted to bring to your attention was budget. Um overall, we have fourteen million dollars for music and I've been working very closely with Chad. In fact, he has been phenomenal um with helping uh compromise, understand what's really need, focus on instruction and making classroom space better. Um this one, we were really, really hoping to avoid an addition and we just couldn't. Um so we do have a fifteen hundred square foot addition, which is the choir room. Um so our budget's a little bit higher than what we had anticipated for this portion of the fourteen million. I'm not concerned about that, neither is Chad, um but it is definitely needed. Um this is, you know, one of the oldest spaces, the program has grown exponentially. And when we talked about, um if you could go back, Paul, sorry, um we talked about the um storage uh issues and I my pointer doesn't work.
So down at the bottom there.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
So, so this is, this is the band room, this is the orchestra room and currently in the in between were practice rooms and an office in here. So that's been taken out, this is all storage, instrument storage for band. And then out here in the small theater area, we've expanded this out, pulled it out, shortened the stage area up a little bit that was in the front of it. And created more storage in here um in these spaces for, this was current storage space. And we've expanded that into more storage for band and instrument. The orchestra room down here, right next to it was the choir room. All right, well, we've taken the, we're gonna take the risers out of the choir room, the permanent ones that are built in there. And create orchestra instrument storage in that space and that, and that's where the addition comes into on the uh.
That is directly across from the library.
Right here is the uh library, the media center in here, right outside of that is the new choir room, that's the addition. What's going on in the building? And we're creating a a bigger, a little bit bigger space for the learning center, moving the school store over back to where I think it used to be at one time. And then creating another conference room space in the upper corner of the library.
Just curious on um acoustics with the choir room being next to the library, uh uh do they have to do like extra insulation?
Well, there's a, there's a hallway right here that separates the two.
Okay.
And that, so.
So you're opposite.
The additions in the courtyard.
In the courtyard is where we're building. It's not wall to wall.
Okay, got it, in the courtyard, okay.
So la- media center, wa- hallway, courtyard is where they're doing.
Okay. I see, I see, I see, okay.
There is acoustic treatment going on in all of the roofs, but yeah, this is completely separated.
Okay, I didn't realize that bumped out into the courtyard, I got you, okay.
Yep. Yep.
I think I knew that, but.
Yeah, the the easiest thing to do with this project was for the band room and orchestra room, to not make those rooms bigger per se. But to remove all the storage, which gave us more classroom space. So um that's what we've done, we worked very hard on the number of storage units we need to also accommodate maybe some future growth. So that we don't pinch ourselves in the next ten years by not having enough again. It has really, um Chad has really had conversations with teachers about making sure they do their inventory, making sure, making sure we're. Um getting rid of assets that are no longer viable, if we have a lot of expenses for repairs. Um so it's, it'll, it'll be a nice refresh. Um acoustic treatments are going in each of the classrooms, um the teachers have been um a hundred percent part of this process. They're very, very pleased with where we're at. Um the small theater does get just a smaller, a little bit smaller, um but there was no concern from the principal theater or any of the music instructors.
That was my next question, good, okay, cause they originally, I thought, asked for more of like backstage or green room space or something with the theater.
I don't remember that, that was, that was more, that was more for, well, that was large, but.
That was large, okay, I thought here they wanted something to the small theater, but if they're happy and they're okay.
They, they're all a hundred percent behind this. And what happened really was they didn't lose the stage, they lost the space on the ground for chairs between the stage and the first riser. So it was really just stacking a bunch of chairs for audience members, which they don't do big events in there.
Okay.
Yeah, and Christine briefly mentioned the the instrument repair and that was a big piece of the storage picture for this. Because right now, they're storing them in racks out in the hallways and and there's a lot of money they spend repairing instruments because of the way they're stored right now. So they did a lot of work on studying how to properly store instruments and and mitigate some of those damages to it.
One of the other focuses too was improving uh supervision and sightlines. So if you'll remember going down that hallway, there was a lot of nooks and crannies and some big open areas. Um we've really cleaned that up so that it's one hallway with classroom doors. Um there's a little bit of a nook going into the small theater, but um it it's much easier for supervision purposes.
Um since I was in one of the art classrooms yesterday, are we doing anything for the art programming? Us, we've talked a lot about music, is there any request for something for the, at West Middle School?
Yeah, that was all done.
We just.
Yeah, yeah.
We did, I I'm, like I said.
Yeah.
Last bond.
We moved them from the outside building in and we renovated the interior space. If you'd like to see it sometime, it's pretty nice.
The entire wing.
Yeah.
Okay, I was in one classroom, so.
Yeah, all of that.
All right.
Pottery, I mean, stainless steel sinks, all the, all the way through there.
Yeah, just thought I'd put a pitch in for somebody who hit me yesterday, can I question?
Yeah, I just, so that the fourteen million here, that what we approved earlier for secondary music renovation is still.
It's still safe.
Same, so everything's the same.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two point five for this and what the fourteen million for?
Yeah, this actually is probably gonna be three point five to three point nine. Um but again, I've reviewed that with Chad, we had some initial renderings for some of the schools that were kind of excessive, so. I I can't say for sure towards the end of it, um that we might not mean need more money. I think it would end up being in the next bond anyway, just based on when we can actually get to the work. Um but we all agree this is necessary for the best instruction at school.
So maybe next month and this estimated cost here can be three point five.
Yes. Yep, I didn't wanna change it until I informed you what was going on.
Sure, thank you.
And when we get the bid, we'll know when we actually get bid, yeah.
Yeah, 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 this is the budget, yeah.
Yep, yep.
I'd like to give you a heads up before I just change it and have you wonder.
I appreciate that, I like this table too, I've said that before, but I still like it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um are you done, Mr. Dwayne?
I am.
Okay, sustainability, Dr. Vina Wagner.
Okay, yeah, um we were kind of few but mighty um in our last meeting, um but a couple of key items for you. Uh we have uh across the district, there are three buildings that currently have solar panels. Um one, uh West Woods, um right now, Ken O'Brien, who's one of our facilities uh supervisors, has worked on that. And that is up working, you know, doing fine, but the other two um are Central High School and Traverse Heights, they are not working correctly. Um and and when I say correctly, not at all. Um so what uh we needed to do is we needed to have an assessment done of what it would take to fix them. Uh we've worked with Keen Energy locally, uh and we um fortunately uh we were able to get a grant from Cherryland Electric. To, um they have paid Keen Energy Solutions to come and do a full assessment of those, to be able to tell us exactly what needs to be done. Those are um interesting, both of these, both of these right now are in the, in the Traverse City Light and Power um jurisdiction. Um so our our plan for the committee is, uh once we know exactly what it's gonna take to get those working, updated and online. Is to write a grant to Traverse City Light and Power um to repair those and get those up and running.
I know exactly who to talk to.
I know you do. And we have, and we have, we have a board member of T C L P Honor Committee as well, Suzanne Tobin, so really excited about that work. And um you know, one of the things we're talking a lot about is, as these projects are done in the future of having some way to have, you know, a clear. Maintenance, you know, plan and 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 funds to be able to do that, a part of the fundraising opportunities um with that. So that's a key protocol thing we wanna put in place of, if we do some of these things in, you know, in the future, how is it that it's maintained? And does it, does it break and doesn't work for a certain period of time anymore?
That, that's the challenge with, um sometimes we get grants for things and then there's no operational plan to maintain or. Take care of it or fix it in the future.
And then uh we had a first draft of um a full one point O sustainability plan that we. And then uh we had a first draft of um a full one point O sustainability plan that we reviewed. We're going to work uh this month to get that tidied up. And my plan is to bring that first draft to the board. Um I will bring it here hopefully in January. And then to the board for input and thoughts on it. Um some just key highlights are that um we have, yeah, every school will be going through and and becoming at least a first level uh Michigan Green School um a part of the project. Um we have some things of looking at a few pilots across the district for different um opportunities as well. Um and so key data collection things that we just don't have data on um to be able to see what are there. Um and even some policy advocacy things um that the the group has specifically dealing with lunch and what we're allowed to do. They recognize fully, Tom Fried, this is a part of our group to recognize what, you know, food wise, what we have to serve, what we can't just, you know, give away or not give a kid. I think that's the one that, you know, they were surprised at that under USDA in order for us to get reimbursed for a lunch, a kid has to take certain foods, even though they may not want it, you know? And so um it's not as simple as, well, can't we not just do that? No, we can't, but.
You can't take it back if they don't eat it and you can't.
It it gets thrown away and and that's not universal to us. I I had a school visit, I'm in California a couple of years ago, where I watched kids get their lunch and every single one of them take the drink and throw it in the garbage and throw it in the garbage and throw it in the garbage and throw it in the garbage. But that's the realities of what the USDA component was there. So we're gonna do a little study with that and the group wants to be able to have information to advocate with policymakers at the federal level if there is ability for change. So so again, that'll be in that plan and so uh plan on bringing that to committee and board in January.
I know that s- well, the D D A was implementing a composting program. Do we do a composting program at all?
No, and it's some, I mean, we have, um Montessori does, um and it's something that we've talked about again. It there's some labor intensiveness to that. But um one of the things this group has been very steadfast is is what can we do to empower students? Um so I think that that's something that we're gonna continue to talk on. The one point O are things ready to get started. I think that that might be a two point O in the next level after the first year. And we get our environmental groups going and kids, you know, working, you know, and how can we? One of the big things is is like if we can get kids to change practice, we recognize it's gonna be done from a bottom up from student advocacy. And so getting our environmental clubs, those those kids to work, to work with even our younger kids and a mentor component of um, you know, of uh of some of the sustainability activities, recycling, composting, those kind of things. I think that's something that they wanna tackle more after a first year in a two point O kind of plan, so.
All right, uh finance.
I don't really have a finance update. Um we don't have any new information. We're currently working on um after count day information and making sure we have all the staff placed and all the vacancies accounted for. So we'll be bringing a budget amendment to you in February. I don't anticipate it looking too different from the original budget, um which is good news. Um because um we actually thought it might be worse and it's not, so.
But there's the thirty one double A sitting out there, as you all know. So I've informed all of you on where we're at with that. Um I uh I didn't hear anything back from the board, so I did yesterday go in and check mark the box for acceptance of the money. And then depending on the outcomes of the the statewide lawsuit, um we'll know that hopefully mid-December. Um if we win in either one of the courts, we only need one of the two. Um we'll move on just as we've checked and if not, we'll have a special board meeting, have a discussion.
We have until December thirtieth now.
Correct.
At least to rescind that.
Correct.
And and that will be enough time for us to be able to modify the budget amendment to reflect if we have to take more money out of the mail. So we'll be able to.
Can you remind us how much money we're talking about, the thirty one double A?
About a million, correct, Sandy?
Yeah, one point two.
One point two million.
And that's with carryover or not carryover?
No, that's straight up.
Straight up. So we're spending more, we plan to spend more, around two million, I believe, in this year for those positions.
No, that was the previous year.
You looked at the previous year, which had a lot of carryover.
I see.
Yep.
And and it used to be that the allocation was higher. It's gotten a little bit lower um with more restrictions.
So that one point two covers all those positions?
No, because now some of them are no longer eligible. So for instance, Patrick's position in the past was eligible under the money. Uh right now it is not eligible under the money.
What else in there? So the N C double A, I mean, the Community Action Agency, the counselors.
That 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 had to go, that as well, that had to go right now to thirty one A from at risk. And so they are in our most at-risk buildings.
Well, I might ask a question about where that later, as if if need be.
We're not there yet because we don't know the money. That's where we're gonna have to do some conversations. But we had to commit to the um to the N M C A A folks.
Yeah.
So thirty one A is is what we were able to, you know, commit. That's about the only thing at the moment we've committed really, thirty one A. Um Jesse and Dan have a plan on where that is from that. But this is a big kind of like, you know, shell game with this and where it lands for us to determine where the rest of the pieces land.
So this year we did move Patrick to general fund. Last year we had to move some of our school uh security liaisons cause they didn't qualify last year, so they were moved to general fund last year. Um so it's it's unfortunate. It started out being uh pretty open to the district discretion on how they spent it between mental health and safety and security and now it's pretty prescriptive.
That's the problem. When we finally get that language, it has little changes on what your allowable expenses are. So year to year, you have to look at that and getting it so late.
Are we able to see like this body, the three of us, like, cause I saw those allocations for last year. I haven't really seen categorical grants or nowhere to find them about this this year that we've approved back in May.
So in the original budget, it's itemized, um.
So I can go in there and see that?
By category, so it's by function code.
Yes.
So you would see it by instruction, by um.
Yeah, it's not as specific as what was shared with us as far as Patrick, the N C double A, uh the 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 community agency.
That's, there's a lot of documentation there for that.
Can we see that for all of our categoricals?
We've been and we've been asked from the board to not micromanage to that element.
I'm just, I mean, I think it will.
If you have a specific, I'm happy to, you know, show you, you know, in that element of the board.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna be asked to make a decision on whether to rescind our decision, um I I'd like to be as informed as possible about where, cause I have no clue, to be honest. And people are asking me like, where is this million dollars or two million dollars? What is it fund? What is it gonna fund this year? And I I don't, I'm like, I'm on the board and I have no idea.
And we don't yet.
Uh well, we do because we just approved the budget in May, this year.
But that was assumed we would have the thirty one double A.
Estimated.
So I'd like to see what we estimated for this year.
We have all of the grants itemized as it relates to the total amounts in the original budget. So you can go look at Fund thirteen, which is state money. You can look at Fund fourteen, which is federal money, and it lists every single grant we get in the total dollars allocated.
So Patrick will be in there.
It doesn't go down to that level that you're talking about twenty thousand account codes.
Well, we saw it, I'm just getting it, we we it was shared with us for last year.
Yep.
So I guess I'm asking, could it be shared with us for this year?
Just for that one, thirty one double A?
I guess, yes.
Yeah, but we don't have it yet.
Uh, okay.
We can tell you what we would like to try to do, but.
Or what we guessed or what we estimated on.
I think what he's saying is can we, do we have some kind of a.
Normally, if the budget was done earlier, we would. But remember, we had to create that, you know, with dollar amounts and not exactly what the expenditures would be because it came so late.
And maybe it's a moot point, depending on what happens in the courts, but I I would like to see that if we do have a special meeting on.
Yeah, that's no problem. Yeah, I, you know, I, like I said, if you have a specific, like I, we have, we have thoughts right now of what we're thinking.
Sure.
You know, that we're putting through, but like, we're like, if this and maybe and not, you know, like the best part.
I think it'd just be helpful for me to answer questions in the community, since I'm on the finance committee and I don't really know about the finances of what we're talking about, to be honest.
Well, I think in fairness, though, I mean, between our delayed state budget and then trying to plan on, you know, I mean, I think there is a lot of, there's been a lot of confusion. So I don't, I wouldn't, I mean, like, you know, I mean, there's just been a lot. You can only budget on what you can try to assume from previous years, but then they change. I mean, this is all coming from the state too. So I mean, I don't, I I for community members to hold us accountable when the state can't even figure it out. I mean, I think, um I mean, I understand if we're going to make a decision based on something, that makes sense. But I I think to dig down to that level when we don't even, we haven't known.
At that point, though, I'm happy to give the thoughts on what we're thinking for the thirty one A and thirty one double A.
Perfect.
I think that's what you're looking for from that aspect.
Yeah.
And we're and we're trying to debate that right now and then, or do we go, hey, we're gonna ask you to give us more fund balance to be able to cover these things.
Right, or or you can ask us for our input, maybe if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
The challenge, so both thirty one A and double A are not grant applications where you actually say how you'd like to use the funds. It's a categorical number and we won't get our at-risk final allocation till when, Sandy?
August.
August. So if we typically will be very conservative on what we do with that. Um most of it is staff and as you know, we haven't laid any staff off. Um so that could potentially impact general fund if the allocation doesn't come through, but that's why we're very conservative. So if we get one point two, one point four, we might just allocate a million. We know sometimes that creates a carryover situation. The problem is that we don't know our allocation until after our books are closed. It creates.
Yeah, I get it. I get all that. I guess I'm just, if we're gonna be asked to vote on to turn down one million dollars, I need to know what we're turning down.
Yeah.
As far as relates to people, because we're not talking about hardening buildings with the safety money.
No.
We're talking about people.
Yep.
So I I guess I.
And just in past and and I don't know if this helps or doesn't help or whatever, but I I mean, a specific instant uh instance had to do with like our Eastern, we had, or not just Eastern, but we had ki- uh classrooms that were, had a lot of kids in them and we got a lot of emails and co- conversations from the community. And so John came to the board individually and and I don't know if you were on the board or not on the board, but to say, hey, we're gonna have to pull from our fund balance if this is what you want to do. You have to make that decision.
I watched that. That was four days before school started last year. So I I wasn't on the board, but I'm aware of that. And I think that's, if that's where we're headed, and I get, we probably are with this deadline.
We are.
And it's a strange way.
We're not, we don't lay anybody off, you know? So we're having the staffing, it's just a matter of which show pot it comes from.
Yeah.
That's right.
And that's the reality. And so that's where, but you know, that's why I kind of, we've gotten into this and board, are you prepared that if, you know, the not, that it'll be fund balance? You know, and I think the board's given me that direction that, yeah, we're going to maintain what we have, you know, at least for this year. And then in a year, if we don't have it, we're gonna have to make a decision.
Right.
You know, but you know, the reality is, is we don't, we don't have a lot more of anything. I think thirty one A is the one um that, you know, we ended up a little bit. And so Dan and Jesse are taking a look at the thoughts right now of, okay, for some of the the goals based on the strategic plan, what is it that we wanna try and invest in to be able to raise student achievement and do something?
I mean, that's exactly where my thought goes to. So it'd be very, it's gonna be a tough decision on the three of, seven of us.
It will be. It's a horrible decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a horrible decision.
The people, the pinheads.
And it's always after the school year started, which is just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
The impact is great.
I think that um.
Especially when you're talking about mental health, right?
This is why I I was insisting on like, we need to try and do something, you know, and I'm hopeful that the judge agrees.
Yeah.
So am I.
Yep, yep.
All right, um district purchases, anything you wanna highlight for us?
Um nope, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the change that'll be coming to the West Middle School renovation budget. Um other than that, I don't really have any updates.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one last question. I just, sorry, but I, and you don't need to answer me now, you two, but I'm just curious when we as a district or as a state um started providing our elementary students with laptops. I'm just looking at March coming up here.
Somebody know what year that was?
Has it been like ten years, twenty years?
It's probably been almost ten. God, I feel like I was four.
Gotta be longer than that. Uh this is my sixth year.
Yeah.
And so and I was be, I've just after covid.
Time flies.
I mean, uh it the Chromebooks have been in the elementaries for a long time. They may not have been one to one, they might have been shared on carts, but they have been.
Yes, yes.
I can ask Evan.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I.
I, you know what? We went one to one in covid.
Yeah.
It was twenty twenty or twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
Because we needed to send them home as students.
Yeah.
We were barely scraping by with spares, so we decided to go one one.
And the only reason I ask, I mean, there's lots of uh national news around screens in classrooms. I'm just curious and I get it and we're not alone and I'm sure we have one to one across the state, but I just.
Yeah.
As we look, that's a big investment coming up.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, yeah, that's the weird thing of kind of covid, it came out of it, that there was funding from the state to do that, you know, specifically, so.
There's there's so many more things than just a a student working on it in a classroom. It helps with testing. I know our C K L A has some materials that students can do on their own at their level. Um so it it has really evolved more than just a comedy room for covid, um learning at home.
But there are like, you're right, there's a lot of conversations. So we're talking about it, so.
Yeah.
It's coming up and I, that's why I like that table.
All right. No more, we don't do second public comment, so I guess.
I have one more item if you would humor me for a second. So um I just wanted to try to get some guidance on, so for central grade, um we have talked in the past about um evaluating um A C. I'm I'm looking for guidance on, we we have had um internal meetings um to talk about uh multiple systems. We've met um specifically with Keen Energy to get their feedback. And I'm trying to figure out what what's the best process to bring this to the board for informational purpose? Do we start here? Do we just go to the full board? Um we're about ready to share that information and get some feedback from the board. Um we have cost estimates, um we know it'll cost um now for installation, we know it'll cost long term.
I I mean, I would say whatever, I mean, you know, having had this conversation of air conditioning on our second story buildings for a long time, um you know, obviously the whole board to be included. So if it's easier just to bring it to the whole board and that way you don't have to.
Do it twice.
Yeah.
You know, we've got a couple of different options for what that could look like, so you know, that um and just.
Yeah, we have the the cost of the options for installation, ongoing maintenance, how it affects the site and um budget.
Well, it seems to me there's three options. There's no A C, there's equipment that's adapted to be A C compatible and then there's full A C, right?
Yeah, but there's multiple products. So we 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 were asked to look at geothermal and so, you know, some of those sustainability uh committee concerns and going all electric, like we've been analyzing all of that. So I'd like to try to get in front of the board and I didn't know if you wanted it to come here first to see if I had enough information before we went to the full board.
We can do it here if you wanna get some initial impression on whether or not the questions are answered.
Are you comfortable with that?
I think this goes back to our being efficient with committee use and but I I would, I'm I'm with Erica about a committee as a whole and I know we don't like using ad hoc committees, but this seems like something as a committee as a whole, like, cause this is a fifty five million dollar, this is a massive project.
Yes.
So I I and that's where, if it would be helpful for the three of us to give you, but I would probably just kick it to the committee as a whole.
I I mean, one of the, again, one of the rationales of subcommittees like finance is vetting some of this stuff. And you see an obvious series of questions that don't have answers to them. At least you're aware of that before you take it to the board and the board can assume that it's been vetted at least one stage.
And we generally do that. I think this is one of the unique ones. It's just, it's a B H A, right? You know, they be like, everybody, you know, you're going to get input for different people's thoughts, I mean, on all of it. Um so I I in my mind, it is a full board, you know?
It's it's obviously a full board discussion.
It it might even be, you know, it might even be, you know, with between this, the central gym, it it might even be a study session. I mean, just go through all of it. That way, the whole plan, the all of it, maybe that's where the board, maybe it's something we bring up in January at the organizational meeting, how we might wanna go about that.
Well, in all honesty, I don't know that it just affects central grade, right? Because we've also talked about our other buildings that have two stories. And what is, you know, I mean, like, if you're gonna do it for central grade, then it's probably gonna affect Montessori and Eastern.
Well, and that's a decision for the future, like, again, maybe the next bond planning, what do you wanna start to do?
And that's. Yeah. And that's the beginning of a new bond.
But that's what I mean on it, like, yes, it's a central grade conversation and that's great, but I think it's also gonna trigger conversations about our other buildings and.
It will and you know, in in, you know, and again, standard, you know, of like, you know, how you wanna do it, I mean, all those kind of things. So at least you get some kind of thoughts of, yes, in the future, when we do projects for any second or third story building, we wanna consider or, you know, those kind of things, so.
And I'll have a lot of operational recommendations and I'd like to ask the board to consider a policy with set points if we have a lot of A C. Um we really struggle sometimes when we have an area that has A C. We used to have board policy with set points that were like seventy four, but we'll still get requests for people at seventy two that are hot and they want us to come deal with it and we don't currently have a policy with set point. It was just kind of one of those things that as we went through this big change of policy that we didn't spend time on and I'd like to talk about that. Because it does become a challenge trying to um meet every individual's need versus having a standard of, look, if it's at least seventy four degrees, we're not gonna come and address that for individual people. So that those are things still part of sustainability too. Like at some point, how much are we gonna spend on on comfort and individual comfort?
Well, and I'd be curious too, didn't we pilot at Eastern this past?
Yeah.[1774.13]
Fall and so it'd be interesting just to hear some feedback on, you know, how often, how long, how much, what were the cost, you know, and not that.
That was the purpose.
And not to that, me as a board member needs to dig into that level, but just interesting when you start to think about those portable units, you know, um efficiencies and things like that, so, and again, individual comfort.
It's gonna be a really important conversation for the next bond when we start talking about when to do that.
Well, and I would, I would be prepared, it's ultimately a curriculum question too, because one of the reasons, maybe I'm an old guy, but one of the reasons I've always thought about air conditioning compatibility is if you wanna go to year round schooling. It's very difficult to hold school in summertime, not saying we're going to, but if we want to, we've gotta have buildings that will accommodate it.
And so the question is like, are the portable units suffice? Is it something in the future the board wants to try and set a standard for? You know, is that geothermal, is that regular air conditioning, like, th- those are all the kind of pieces that we said when we got to central grade?
Yeah.
We would, you know, hash out, you know.
Well, and if you think it's better in a study session, I mean, I'll leave, up to you guys, I mean.
Well, I I just, I wonder too, like, what what is the board going to want to see to be able to? I I, now that we have information, there's not gonna be a whole lot of time for decision-making. And so do I need to bring people in to for presentations, do I need to bring all the consultants we talked to to share it themselves?
This is my point, to see, like, for the board to even see the whole central grade plan.
Yeah.
Like, there are a couple that were on the committee, but I kind of feel like, you know, like, it might be best in like February, March, you know, somewhere in there to just take a, I don't know, Saturday morning and just go through the whole thing, you know, and so the board can see the whole enchilada, you know?
I would love that.
Yeah, I think it's a study session, I really do. Because one of the things I don't wanna have happen is be four years down the road, we decide we wanna go to at at least pilot your own schooling and find out that central grade school isn't compatible and now it's another ten million dollars to retrofit.
And that's what I want board members to be able to ask, I think it'd be good to have the engineers, you know, and architects here and be able to answer all those kind of questions and just trying to do that in a regular board meeting, we all know that gets tight and it gets long, it gets late. You know, and that's why I feel like it might be best to, like I said, take like a Saturday morning or a Friday morning or something and just go through central grade and have conversations.
Alright.
So so my 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 ask of board members is, in January, when we talk about meetings and set the calendar, I think this, uh that first study session that we generally kind of plan it for, I think this would be a great one for the first one, but.
I think so too, especially if you need fairly good.
Yeah, and the sooner, and the sooner the better, just because we can react to it faster. And budget is a concern with that, I mean, I I only had fifty set aside in the original and I'm at fifty-five and and I'm pushing it. They're still higher than that right now with their budget, so we're making decisions along the way.
Alright, we are at the end of another finance and operations meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have a good day.
Thank you.